So, welcome to today's panel discussion. We'll be focusing on retaining and recruiting quality board members. In the educational landscape, we know charter schools are taking the lead, and we cannot overstate the importance of a strong governance. And recruiting and retaining individuals who not only possess the expertise that we need, but also have that strong commitment to our school's mission and vision to ultimately drive success for our students. So I'd like to welcome our panel today. We have with us Jeff Wood, who is a director at Tripp Scott. He's a charter school lawyer and he supports boards across the state. We also have Sherri Watts, who is the principal of Mineola Charter Schools in Mineola, Florida. And we have Kara Sharp, the former executive director of Lamb in Washington DC. And now she's an educational consultant specifically for school and board leadership and governance. So, welcome everyone today. So my first question is, how do you assess the needs and gaps within your current governing board? And how do you strategically recruit to fill those gaps?
First, you need to figure out where your board is and its developmental journey. Because boards have a developmental cycle as much as kids and adults do. So are you an operations-focused board where you're really helping to start up a school? Are you a governance board where you're really making sure that all the policies and procedures are in place, everything's running smoothly? Or do you have a school that is really well-established and you are moving to a strategic and fundraising board? Once you figure that out, then you can start to figure out what are the kinds of support that you need. Legal and financial being two of the big ones. Often, sometimes academic-focused people, assessment, data, and then just generally people who are interested and supportive of the mission and vision of the school.
So, my board kind of evolved naturally because we were originally just pre-K through 5. And then we decided to expand to add 7th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. So they had to learn the construction piece and going through that piece. And so they were kind of thrown into it unexpectedly. So sometimes your board starts out one way and they kind of get shifted depending on where the school's going in the vision. So I think, and out of that, I added new board members because I needed some different skillsets on my board too. So I think it kind of, you can start one way and then they kind of get thrown in. So you need them to be flexible, right?
Well, I've had the privilege of representing boards all over the state of Florida. And I've seen it in all of these stages. Foundational, governance, and then legacy boards. And I see that they evolve just like, like you said, families do. And some people sustain and stay on the board the entire journey. And I see people leave and go on to other things. But I think the most important part is, like you said, you got to assess what stage you're at first to see what the perfect match is for a board member. They're hard to find in any scenario. I think I read somewhere where 58% of the nonprofit boards are not satisfied with their board and they're always trying to find better board members. So I can't tell you, based on my day-to-day practice, how important it is. It's essential to have a board that is willing to engage and get involved in the process. And I think that the most important thing is from a charter school movement standpoint, is we got to continue to reach out like this charter school support unit has done this last year and try to help schools find new board members. So.
Thank you. I appreciate how you broke it down in those stages. Because from that school site leadership perspective, we, as school leaders, need that level of support. And that also leads to the next question is, so when you identify those, that stage you're in and where your gaps are, how do you identify potential board members? Where do you look?
Within the community for me. Sometimes it's been parents that I've seen that have been involved in the school, committed, whether it's being a part of the PTO, showing up when we need them for things, participating, active in their child's education. Other, it came out of the construction piece. And so working with construction companies, so recruiting that also at the college level. So just having conversations with people, getting to know them and then seeing if they're interested. With safety being a big push in schools, I have two law enforcement officers on my board now. And that just came out of working with them with all the safety initiatives that are going on. So sometimes it's just happens organically. And then just tapping into that and seeing if they're interested in supporting you. And it's been excellent for my school, for sure.
I think it's really important to have kind of a process, even an application process. It's really great if you are really actively looking for board members, especially in the community, to have something on your website. You know, are you interested in serving on the board? Fill out this quick survey, we'll be in touch. But then also reaching out to volunteer organizations. Because, you know, they help with volunteers. So Rotary Club, things like that. There are also organizations out there that are specifically recruiting and vetting potential board members and then matching them. So Compass Pro Bono does some work on that. Education Board Partners did that. And then they merged with Bellwether in DC. So they're doing that. And that's kind of a growing thing. Because really, quality board members can make or break what's going on in a school.
It's word of mouth, really. You need to communicate what your mission is out there in the community. If you're a school that has a high profile in the community, you're going to naturally attract local community talent that want to be seen as part of your board. But I think you can't disconnect from the fact that you got to establish what's in it for them. I mean, all of our boards here in Florida are volunteer. No one is getting paid, I'm aware of. But the reality of it is, is that you got to induce someone to volunteer the amount of time and commitment it is to be involved in the school. And I've seen that ebb and flow over the 20-some-odd years I've been involved in terms of how to properly do that. Sometimes it's just offering to send them to the conferences, you know? Sometimes it's just telling them that we're going to have a board retreat and we're going to go soup to nuts on what our goals are for the mission. And we're going to do it at X hotel. Things like that. You got to show what's in it for them. Because at the end of the day, they're human beings and volunteers. And I've done it, so I know. I've been a board chair. I've been involved in multiple boards across the state, so.
You do have to show appreciation for them. Because they are not getting paid. And it can be very time-consuming. And they can face some challenges. You know, if things come up in your school and a parent wants to take issue with something that's happened, they can be put in an uncomfortable position that they have to deal with and they are not being paid. So I do think it's very important to make sure they are appreciated in many different ways, for sure.
And you mentioned parents too. And of course, parent board members can be tricky, as we all know. Some understand why they are on the board and how to be on the board as a parent, and some don't. So training is important there. But parents can also be a really great method of word of mouth. You can say to parents, "Look, we're really looking for someone with legal expertise. Do you know anyone?" And that's a great network to tap into.
And you know, I do agree with you. Parents can be tricky on a board. It can backfire, it can also be a blessing. And we did run into that with one of my previous boards. And so we actually have our board members sign a roles and responsibilities understanding guideline. So when they come on, it's a conversation that I have with them. And we go through the documents so they understand. Because what can be an issue for a principal or a school leader is if they do not understand their role. And they begin to get into trying to run the school. And it can be in direct conflict with what you're trying to do. And it's like, "That's my job to run the school, that's why you hired me." "Your job is policy, procedure, and finance, right, and oversight." So that kind of took care of some of the issues we did have. Because I have not had a positive board before. That is not the case now. But those roles and responsibilities, so if I ever have to have a conversation, I can go back and go, "Well, remember, we talked about this." And it kind of gets everybody on the same playing field, which I think them understanding their role is key.
I love that you brought that up. Because my next question is, you know, what are some practices that you do for onboarding? Because when I work with boards or schools across the state, either I see boards that are a little bit too hands-on and overstepping into what the day-to-day responsibilities are. But on the opposite end of the spectrum, I also see boards who are so hands-off and that the school runs amiss because they have not had proper oversight. So what are some practices that you do to onboard your boards and then ensure that everybody is holding true to those best practices?
The roles and responsibilities, meeting with them one-on-one to have a conversation, to talk about, you know, kind of what I need from them. And I also ask them, "What are your expectations of me?", you know? The beauty is, I've been at my school for 20 years. So I'm kind of a part of the institution, if you will. But I do think it's just a conversation, being very honest. You know, asking them, I think too, when you talk to somebody about being a board member, you need to ask them, "Do you know what that means?", right? So to see where they're coming from, you know, those types of things. So I think it's a conversation. I definitely think training would be a good idea, which is something we probably need to implement a little bit more. But I think just making sure everybody is clear on the roles and responsibilities and what they need to do.
Well, I see all kinds of different approaches across the state on this. And obviously, a lot of it kind of dovetails into the governance training piece we have for board members here in Florida. I see a lot of piggybacking going on where we'll get that governance training done. We'll also have a board orientation for the new member. And it takes a lot of patience for the old existing members to have to sit through the, you know, the crossing the t's and dotting the i's pieces. But I think the board members, new board members appreciate that type of orientation. And I think you're right. I think one of the hardest things to do is ask for someone to volunteer and then have a one-on-one conversation questioning the motives for which they're doing it for. And that's uncomfortable sometimes in that context. But I think it's very important because you can quickly garner from someone's conversation about why they're doing that, what their actual motive is.
Absolutely.
I think that the relationship between the school leader and the board chair is absolutely critical.
Yes.
It's critical to identifying great board members and interviewing them, and to onboarding them, and to identifying board members that you might need to counsel off the board. Because it's so easy for people to get into the weeds, like you said, and get too involved in the day-to-day, especially if they're parents. And so helping board members understand that your job is to really work at the 30,000-foot view. If you're asking detailed questions of the board, of the school, of the school leader about operations, about, you know, every $10 expenditure, then you're probably not working at the level that you should. Board work is important, but it is not all-consuming. It shouldn't be all-consuming. It should be kind of fun. So making sure that you're helping people understand that they're there not to constantly find criticisms or to catch those little errors, but really to help the school and the school leader and working in partnership with them to lift up their heads and look at where they're going and helping them get there. And if you can maintain that focus on the mission and vision for everybody and everything that you do, it's easier to generate that positive energy and move forward.
And I like that positive energy that you cited. Because as much as we try to achieve that, there is the reality of sometimes you have toxic board situations, either within the governing board or sometimes with that school leader, and it's very difficult to navigate. How would you recommend schools retain those really high-quality board members? What are some methods to do that?
One of the things I find lacking, and I've been in thousands of board meetings, is that the board meeting usually starts off with, "Here's our important items we need to get done." And they don't focus enough on really why the board members are there, which is they want to hear about the school. They want an extended principal report. They want to know how you guys are doing academically. And you're not feeding them that information. You're just basically putting out your fires when you structure your agendas. I think we should, you know, go back to putting the school and the systems first. Because that's why they originally wanted to be on your board. And that's what they're really there to hear. And I think that's one of the things I would like to see, some kind of momentum change to get that done on the agendas. Yes, there are always going to be critical fires. We have legal requirements, out-of-field waivers that we got to get signed on a meeting-to-meeting basis. But the reality of this, most board members that I know that serve as a volunteer want to hear about the school, want to hear about the kids. That's why they're there.
Again, if you have that really strong relationship between the board chair and the school leader, you can craft meetings that, you know, start with the mission. Or start with, I had a wonderful board chair who started with a mission moment. And so one board member each meeting would talk about their why, why they're serving on the board, what they're interested in there. And it elevated the whole meeting. It really started it off on a positive note. And it was that reminder, like, "We're not here to do this little stuff. We're here for this big stuff." And that was a really powerful way to do that.
I love that idea. It's the first time I've heard of it. I'm going to borrow that for sure.
Absolutely. I agree.
Another question, I like how you use the phrase crafting the board meetings. Because I also feel like Jeff, we sit through many board meetings across the state. While you do want to make sure that you keep it mission-focused, but also be incognizant of time. And I've learned you lose good board members if you're having four, five-hour-long meetings on a monthly basis. How do you strategically recommend boards to craft those meetings in a way that does not, you know, run through the mission and vision too quickly, but also keeping those meetings efficient so you can retain good board members?
I think that's the principle in the chair. You know, having the conversations before the meeting, you know? And I think we do our finances first, then we have the principal's report. So that's when I kind of give the highlights of things that are happening. We were in A, or this is going on, or whatever. And then having itemized things. But I think it's important that you work closely with your chair to kind of set the tone. Because you both are setting the tone for the meeting. And then I'm very adamant that our meetings stay within like an hour. Because they all work, they all have careers, they all have things that they need to get to. And they're taking time out of their day to come. We used to have ours at night, we now have them during the day. So it's very important that they don't feel like it is a time drain on them. And so I think it's keeping them moving, hitting the highlights about things that you're doing at your school. I agree with that completely. They do want to hear the good things. I've even had my board come in and speak during my pre-planning week. I open it up and they can come in and talk to the faculty. And they come to the breakfast and they do the lunch. And so they're there. So it kind of gets them meeting the faculty and staff too. So they're not these people over here that nobody really knows what's going on. And so I think it's including them in those things. The relationships are 100% key. And making sure you have an agenda and you kind of move through it while spending some time. I think you should spend time on the positive things more than the negative, for sure, if possible. And then make sure that you keep moving. And watch the clock, pay it, make sure that you're not keep letting things go on too long. Because they do have lives and things they need to get on to as well.
I read a piece of research a gazillion years ago on highly effective teams. And I wish I could remember the name of it because I refer to it all the time. But it said that the highest-performing teams spend about 40% to 50% of their time working on how they're going to work together. And then the rest of the time is much more efficient. With boards, they're already a whole bunch of structures in place. There's, you know, Robert's Rules of Order for running the meetings and passing policy. And often, all boards that I know of have committees that do the real work. But I think it also, when you get to the board meeting, you really need to apply that rule of, if it could have been an email, it should have been an email. And preparing all of that, all of the documentation that board members need to review well ahead of time so they have time to do it. So that when you're in the board meeting, you know, your principal report or your ED report is detailed. But then you're just hitting with the highlights and it's taking three to five minutes. And the finance report, you know, the whole board understands that the finance committee has it under control and that they're really just hitting the highlights. And they don't need to get into the weeds. And same with other policies. Sometimes people get on boards and they're like, "Well, what do I do as a board member? I don't know." And that's part of that training and that onboarding of what you do and what you don't do. But if their number one job is to make sure that they have reviewed all of the materials ahead of time, that's a beautifully concrete, simple, easy thing that helps them feel prepared and part of the whole process.
And they can ask questions of you before. You know, if they have some concerns and they don't maybe want to make those in a public meeting, they can seek more information and come in more prepared. I agree with that.
So I've heard committee work. Some schools utilize committees effectively. Some schools feel committees are not transparent. Or there's accountability, or there's the disconnect, so they avoid using that committee model. How do you ensure transparency and accountability when you're utilizing committees? Or just within your board as it stands?
We don't use committees. I will just be very honest. That, my board kind of looks at me to get people together and come up with the things. They give me questions, or they have a problem, or something comes up. They expect me to get with people to do that on my own and bring that information back to them. So in all honesty, we do not do committees at all. I bring that information and the board works through it. But I certainly can see where there would be a point to have them. We just haven't had that at this point.
I really recommend the use of committee charters. So it's a simple, usually one page, maybe a page and a half, that outlines specifically, this is what this committee does. This is its relationship to the board. This is what it's reporting to the board. So, I mean, again, that's the piece of making sure that you have in place the understanding of what the committee does for the board so that the board can trust that that committee is taking care of that.
In all the bylaws that I draft, we always have committees designated as to what their purpose is, right in the bylaws. So everyone, there's no surprise as to what their role is. But now in practice, what I see, very few, the charter schools, and that's what I love about charter school practice, they're all different, right? Very few charter schools utilize committees, even if they're in their bylaws. They do it when there's a situation where they have a finance that's coming up, where they're building a building. They'll say, "Okay, well, we have this in our bylaws, let's go ahead and form a finance committee." But, you know, serving for those committees, obviously they're still under sunshine, they got to be published and all that. But serving on those committees, I think, is an ability to dive into the details that you need to dive into, that you don't want to have everyone on the board participate in that. Because they're involved with different areas. And so I think that that is an important part of the utilization of a committee. But back to the transparency issue. Out of that committee should come a report. It should come minutes from the meeting, what was discussed. And then that gets shared back to the general board so that they know what they missed in that committee meeting. Obviously, all the board members are invited to attend it. But if they don't, then they'll have the feedback on what happened at the meeting and what the action items are going to be asked to vote on.
I think you brought up a really important thing, and that's the bylaws. I cannot tell you how many boards I know of that have gotten into trouble over something little because no one read the bylaws. And that process wasn't followed. It should be a critical part of onboarding. And it should be, they should be reviewed regularly. And the school leader and the board chair absolutely should know it front to back.
I'm going to piggyback on that as well. But also the importance of having policies and procedures in writing and adopted and reviewed regularly. Oftentimes, on our hotline, we'll get a phone call. And I say, "Well, what's the board policy on that?" "We don't have one." And so it's always a great way to really avoid those pitfalls. And I think also, for school leaders, it gives them guidance and support, right? Mineola is very fortunate to have you for 20 years. But we do know school leadership changes, right? And so those policies and procedures, I feel, are so critically important for school leaders to understand what their role, responsibility, and the processes and procedures are scripted out to help best support that school leader too.
It is key. It is your saving grace to have a policy to fall back on. And sometimes you don't realize you need a policy till you need a policy. Because I certainly have found that out.
That's why we call Jeff.
Oh, yes.
Right, exactly. 110%, yes. And it's like, "Oops, we have a problem." So I do think it's important, I agree with reviewing. We have a policy manual, it's on our, our stuff is on our website too. But I think it's important to review bylaws. That was a huge, when I, because I was the assistant principal, then I moved into the principal. So I inherited my board, right? And then when we began looking at the bylaws, we were like, "Good Lord, we've had people on here that aren't even supposed to be on here anymore." You know what I mean? So they expired five years ago. So then you're, which sometimes it's a blessing. It worked out, so I was like, "Perfect!", right? But you certainly do need to revisit those. And I think it's important to have that conversation with your board regularly to even look, "Do the bylaws fit us anymore?" Or do we need to make some changes? Because as your board adapts and they do it longer, they get a little bit more comfortable. And then you want to look at things and change. And then the policies, because we've separated, we were, we're a conversion charter school. So we were under the district employee base. So up until two years ago, we did everything under the policies of the district. Because our employees were under the district still. So in the separation, that is when we found out just how important policies are. I mean, establishing leave policies and all of that. So it was a very important conversation to have with our board. And we have definitely embraced the importance of policies and procedures. And they are key to keeping everything copacetic and in line and everybody knowing what the expectations are. So agreed completely with that.
How do you see boards foster that positive relationship? Not just boards, but how can that relationship be fostered to be positive? And if it's not a positive relationship, what do you do about it?
You need a board that is willing to call itself to the carpet. And you need a board that's willing to be accountable for its mistakes. And a board, and a school leader as well. That needs to be, you know, that we've talked about spaces filled with trust. But now the new phrase is psychological safety. So, and tension is okay, disagreement is okay. Actually, that's what builds really great ideas and policies. And when everyone comes together and works hard at making that happen. But at the same time, you need to hold each other accountable.
Well, when everybody always gets along to go along, it's not functioning well. Because there's no way that a group of people are always going to agree, even with the school leader or the school leader with them. And so I think that people need to feel comfortable to be able to have conversations and tough conversations. I think that comes with building relationships with people, setting the expectations. But the reality is, you do not ever, as a school leader, want a yes board that will set you up for failure very, very quickly. You need someone that says, "Let's talk about this for a minute." You know, you may come in, it's a great idea as a school leader. Then they have a different perspective that they're looking at, those kinds of things. But you certainly do not want just a board that's going to go along to get along. And I even tell my own team at school, "I don't need you to be yes people because you think that's what I want to hear. That's not helping me lead." As a matter of fact, that's setting me up to fail epically. And that's not what I want. So I think it's very important that your board feels like they can be honest with you. And you're not worried that you're going to lose your job over it. It's a conversation. But then you also can go to them and go, "Hey, listen, you know, I have a problem with this. And in this, I didn't take this very well," those types of things. And even with each other in a board meeting. So I think it's very important, it's okay to have disagreements on a board. And sometimes we panic when that happens. But it's actually very healthy.
I definitely think that conflict on boards is where my bread and butter is, unfortunately. And sometimes it's not healthy. Sometimes it leads to lawsuits. But the reality of it is, is that if you have a yes board, they're not really engaged. And it's not, you're going to miss something. The whole point of having them there from oversight standpoint is to catch the things that you're not catching.
Absolutely.
I spend a good fraction of my time counseling principals who say, "Well, I talked to the board chair and this is the direction I want to go. And they're not so certain, what do you think? And then five minutes later, I'll talk to the board chair. You know, I don't understand why so-and-so, the principal, doesn't want to do this or wants to take this action. I think it's not really good for the school." You need to have a third party sometimes come in and help rehabilitate that relationship. So everyone maintains their role and feels like they had a say. You need to have a spirit of compromise built into your decorum on your board meetings. And I think that's the most effective way to deal with runaway boards.
I think that, you know, as much as, we regularly assess our students, right? We should be assessing our teachers annually. The evaluation of the school leader is an important, important responsibility of the board. The board should be regularly assessing itself. You know, in terms of risk management, is it adhering to its bylaws? Does it feel like it has that psychologically safe space? Are they really engaged? Are you holding the mission and vision as the guiding light?
And I'm not saying this because you're here, you do need a good attorney, a good board attorney. So truly.
You should have several, right?
Yes. So you definitely want an attorney that you can pick up the phone and call. And you have a relationship with them too. Because we don't know the legal ins and outs all the time. and you have a relationship with them, too, because we don't know the legal ins and outs all the time. And your board chair needs to feel comfortable calling, too, or your other board members. If they have a question about something, because sometimes they'll ask me, "I don't know. I need to call the person who does." So I think having a good board attorney that also has a good relationship with your board is very important as well.
Absolutely. And oftentimes, people will say, "Well, there's a lawyer on our board," right? And I say, "Well, what's the level of expertise?" "Oh, a construction attorney." I'm like, "Well, but you have a labor issue now." So, you know, making sure you call the right attorney as well, who is an expert in that area, is great, great advice, too. Well, time flies. I could talk about this forever. I wanted to know if you have any final thoughts?
Having a positive board is crucial to your success as a school and as a school leader. And there are people out there that will support you and want to support you. And I think it's just finding those people and tapping in. And you definitely want a diverse board with different skill sets. So you definitely want people that can bring a business perspective, a safety perspective, a construction perspective, if that's where you're going. You want people that are going to bring a different blend of personalities and expertise and that you can rely on, and they can rely on you, too. And then you need to make sure that your staff knows who their board members are and that they... Because those are people making decisions that impact them. It's not just you bringing stuff to the table. So they need to know their board, feel comfortable with their board members, and trust that they are also making decisions that are going to impact them that are for their best interest.
I had a governance friend who said, "What's really important to remember is that when you've seen one board, you've seen one board."
Beautifully said.
And the differences between them are all okay as long as you have the foundation pieces in place to make sure that it is functioning in the way that the school and the school leader needs it to function.
Yep.
And I think that one of the things that there should be a focus on with boards is also diversity. Making sure that you represent the student population that you're serving. And I think that that is something that's critical. And the most effective boards that I've seen in their communities are diverse, and they're open to all kinds of opinions from everyone. So I think that's something that you should have in your background lines when looking for board members.
Well, thank you all so much for lending your expertise to the charter school world, and thank you all for attending this session.
Thank you so much.